I never even noticed that. See now, he's he's helping me, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Yeah.
You can ask me, it's not always a good thing.
But well, yeah. Yeah.
You have this question.
You have a question.
The only thing is, you know, we have all the rest of the person. This is for our head.
But that is one hundred with that.
Here's our lights.
Now we have to do. I don't know. Uh. There is some. So I got that one. Actually, and am I not supposed to work in this slot? Oh. And if it has. Oh. I don't think so. I like that. I think we need to then.
So it's been very bad.
Yeah, of course. Very, very bad. All right. So. I think we can. Yeah. 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 So. I don't care. You have to do that. You have to do that. I don't know. Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah. All right. I was all good. It's just. You got it all again. That's the problem. But. I'm. I'll see something. Something.
Thank you.
So I don't want to be.
I'm sorry, that's all right. I'm sorry. But it's so good. Okay. So it's great. Oh, my God. Which one was it? Grass, grass, green, the sidewalk. I believe. We're going to get down the side of it. And you know, we can also. So it's not exactly the whole. How it comes to be. All words, all of our words. Character. This is happening.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Now, I have to.
Oh, no. Oh. Oh. I had all that. I wanted to say that. It's like this kind of place. Yeah. I just. I have to. Maybe more. Then you have. You're gonna do it. So. So. Yeah. So. I don't see what. That's. Uh. You. Very. Um. Better. Um.
I have to. Have a score of the best. That's right. Well, I will come to get on.
You have. That was. Please. We got some. Oh, well.
Please. I believe that you're on hold. Um. It's worth.
I can do it. We all. Yeah. Three weeks. There was. Wait. I scrub. She's. So it's. For. We were. We're trying to cross. Oh, we went to. They are. That's the. It's the. And it was.
I have one.
And so. He's got. He's.
I'm.
We can. Yeah. Yes. He said.
I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the night. We have. It worked. At the weather. Like. All right. He just. Um. This was first. I can tell you why you should be. Eight hundred.
We don't.
Listen. You say. We should be. Sixty. And here. With him, Brian, help. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Good. We would. Please. Yeah. Seventy nine. Easy. Thank you. Maybe. A little. I don't really know. He got it. Yeah. He don't. He know our guy. He do. I don't know. I don't know. We could.
I must.
We could. We try. We're. He.
Here we go, guys. Like to call or order the city council meeting, June fifth, two thousand twenty five, five thirty P. M., five oh one Main Street. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. And nation, dear God, in the mission, the repeat and justice.
Roll. May I have a roll call? Crenshaw.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mullen.
Here.
Here.
Dade.
Here.
Andrews.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Greenwald.
Here.
All present. Item number four is mayor correspondence. Uh, Friday, June sixth, two thousand twenty five, the Quincy Medical Group is giving free sports physicals, and if you call three one nine five two four four three zero zero, you can make an appointment. Um, the Pokemon Club will meet at the Kielkuk Public Library from four to five. Saturday, June seventh, two thousand twenty five, Farmer's Market is back and up and running at River City Mall from eight to eleven. There's a pancake breakfast at the Odd Fellows Building on Eighteenth and Blondo, and that money is going to the June's celebration, Juneteenth Celebration, and that's from eight to eleven. Um, item number three is hanging, hanging with the Hy-Vee Car Cruise, a Kielkuk, at Kielkuk Hy-Vee Parking Lot from five to ten P. M., and it's also cruise night on K O K X radio station here in Kielkuk. Um, Glenda Studio Dance is having their recital at six o'clock P. M. at the Grand Theater. The, um, Smokin' Crawdaddies will be at Rand Park Pavilion at seven P. M., and Fat Jimmy's and the Dog House Food Trucks will be there, and it is a B Y O B event. Sunday, June eighth, two thousand twenty five, Kielkuk Art Center is having an event called Around the World in Eighty Minutes, and that is at the Hoffman Mansion in Hamilton, Illinois. It is a fundraiser for the Kielkuk Art Center, and you can check their Facebook page for more information. Then Saturday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty five, Classic Reunion will be at the Rand Park Pavilion. Ginger Billies and Dog House Food Trucks will be there, and it is another B Y O B event. Then Wednesday, June eighteenth through Saturday, Sunday, June twentieth, please check and check the newspaper and the local radio stations to, um, join in the Juneteenth Celebrations that will be here in Kielkuk. Um, as always, eat, drink, and shop local, and kindness matters. Now, we all, we get to do one of the fun things here at City Hall. Um, during our council meetings, we will be swearing our new, uh, city, uh, sys, interim, interim city administrator in, so Jim, can we go forward? Okay. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, Jim Furno, do solemnly swear.
I do, Jim Furno, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Iowa.
And of the state of Iowa.
And that I will honestly demean myself in office.
And that I will honestly demean myself in office.
And impartially discharge the duties of.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of.
Interim city administrator.
Interim city administrator.
Of the city of Kielkuk.
Of the city of Kielkuk.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
And in accordance with the laws of the state of Iowa.
And in accordance with the laws of the state of Iowa.
And, and ordinances of said city.
And ordinances of said city.
So help me, God.
So help me, God. Thank you.
Welcome. That's, we'll take that back.
Anything else?
Well, you, this, no, not really. You already said yes, and that's all that matters to me.
All right.
You can't, she won't. She wants to take.
Oh, we can do that again. I'm willing to shake her hand.
All right. Item number five is citizens' request. If we have someone here that would like to speak, if you come to the podium and take about two minutes, state, state your name and your address, and, um, we'll hear what you have to say. Anybody?
My name's Lamont Walker. I live at eighteen oh one Time Street.
Hold the mic up there a bit that way. Thank you.
Um, I'm here about the project you're doing on Eighteenth Street. Um, when I was first approached about this, when I seen them staking it out, I talked to one of your people, I don't know where, I can't remember which one of them was, and they said that they could take three feet of my property. Okay? So I'm looking at this, and I'm, I'm wondering who designed all this, especially the sidewalks, because it's taken half of my hill on the Eighteenth Street side. Also, my steps, I had three steps going up to my house in the front. Now I have seven. I'm not very happy about this. I mean, I'm great, I'm, I'm grateful that you fixed the road, but I'm not grateful that you narrowed it, and you're gonna put the parking on one side. I'm not happy about that.
So as far as the street being narrower, that wouldn't have anything to do with the right of way. The right of way is the same, right, Brian?
I understand that, but I, what I'm talking about is my land, my property from the sidewalk to this way to my house. Half of my hill is gone. You need to come look. I can show you.
And I.
Pictures.
I understand, um.
So we, we didn't do any right-of-way acquisitions along this project in every, where we did do, where we did do regrading on the sidewalks, I'm, you live on the corner of, of.
Eighteenth and Dona.
And Timea. So where, where we did have to do regrading was to make the sidewalks ADA compliant.
That's, that's unacceptable to me, ma'am.
We, we kept everything within the city right-of-way.
The sidewalk curves. Sidewalks are supposed to go straight. All of them curve.
So, um.
I'm not the only one that, I'm the only one down here talking about my property.
Okay, and, and sir, I understand, and, and I'm grateful that you came and talked to us. Um, I'm more than willing to come look, but I, Brian would be the, um, person that's in charge of the project, and the sidewalk would be a little bit different shaped at the, where the street goes down, where it goes down into the street, right?
Yes, they, with, with the engineers would have designed as to meet ADA compliance, however, they would have to do that within the right-of-way.
Curve.
They, a lot of times they do that to get it to match up for going across the streets. So when we put in an ADA compliant ra, ramp to get wheelchairs into the street, per the ADA requirements, you have to be able to pick them up on the other side of the street, straight across from one another. I can come out in the morning and, and we can look at what, exactly what you're talking about.
What about my property?
Well, I think, I think that's a situation where, as Brian said, he can come out and look at tomorrow, and I'm more than willing to come too.
If you think about it, that takes my property value down if you cut off some of my land.
Did we cut off some of his property?
Yes, you did.
So we would have cut off city right-of-way that you would, you maintain in mo, but that's still inside the city right-of-way. And I'd have to look at the plans, whether or not we, how, if we did have a, a temporary construction easement on your property to make the grades work, but I don't have those in front of me right now. Like I said, I can bring them tomorrow, and we can have a conversation and physically look at it.
And, and I don't, I mean, I, I haven't seen it, so I can't make comments on it without seeing it, and I'm more than willing to come tomorrow, too.
Question. So when you do this stuff, do you put the designs so the public can see this?
Well, yeah, they, they go out.
Is it public record?
Yes. If you want a copy of the plans, you're more than welcome to have a copy of the plan.
I say, the council, you need to pay more attention to this.
Okay, so, um. Is it okay that we come tomorrow?
Okay, I'm not.
I mean, is it okay for us to come take a look?
Sure, it's okay to come.
Okay.
But I, again, and, and I think I'd need to consult his attorney.
And, and you have every right to do that, sir, but Brian and I will come tomorrow morning and take a look and see and answer your questions. Okay? All right. Anyone else?
I understand your frustration.
Now you gotta pull that down.
Um, my name is Dr. Jennifer Lawler, and I'm, I own Lawler Family Chiropractic on the corner of Eighteenth and Johnson Street. And I just found out the other day that it's gonna be one-sided parking. This is gonna be a huge problem for me because I have a lot, fifty percent of my clientele are Medicare. Medicare patients are usually somebody who's disabled or sixty-five years or older, and so these people have challenges with walking, getting in and out of their vehicles. Um, they use canes, they use walkers, we have wheelchair people that come in. So what I'm asking, is it possible to have two-sided parking in front of Lawler Family Chiropractic? It may not be possible. I understand that. Uh, we weren't expecting the street to be narrowed either. If it's not able to be done, can we get some street signs up that designate Lawler Family Chiropractic parking on the, the area right in front of Johnson Street, in front of my building, and from the, like, Johnson Street to the alley? Because I sometimes will need five to seven parking spots just to be able to, to see my patients at the time that we're the busiest. Um, I understand that. It may be something I have to pay for, and I, I am willing to do that if we can put some signs up to designate parking in my area.
Is that something where you're looking for handicap parking, then, since those were the people you're concerned about, because it's the, the opposite side of the street from you that they're gonna be removing the park?
Yeah. Uh, we've talked about handicap, like, maybe having one handicap parking spot, but the problem is, on that corner right there, um, we can maybe fit three people, but I have so many patients that are elderly that don't have handicap stickers. Um, actually, actually, last week, somebody fell in the street, was cut and laid there, and they told me, I said, why didn't you call and come get us? We would come and got you. And they said, I was afraid to, to take the foot, take the time to call because the people come around the corners, they're going so fast. And so they said, I just wanted to get up and get out of the street. So I think if we, and that's why I came here tonight, because I know that you guys have probably dealt with this before, and you can maybe help us out. If we put a, um, handicap parking spot, is it going to then affect other places? You know, that's what I worry about. Then it's gonna cut off a good designated area that the elderly, you know, I see people up to ninety years old, ninety-five, I mean, they're, they can drive, so, um, they may not have a handicap parking spot, but they need that first one or two parking spots. So. Does anybody have any questions for me at all?
So maybe tomorrow, when we stop and look at, um, Mr. Walker's property, maybe there'd be an explanation of how that could be done, or can it be done? I don't know if it can be done.
I have the alley in the back, and actually, we've never really used that before. Um, we started now, because there's probably two staff to three staff that, you know, we are using parking. We started parking back there. Um, we have a loading dock, and so we actually lined up two people in a line, but then if the first, first person needs to leave, then the person needs to go out, move the car and do that. There's a spot next to me that has a cement slab, but there's something about it, like, when I put, park my car there, it just bottoms it out. So any kind of cars, it bottoms out. On the side next to, that could be next to, um, the Eighteenth Street, there's grass there. I mean, I could gravel that and make that parking, too, but still, if there's elderly, they're gonna have to walk half that block up to the thing, which I know it doesn't seem like a big deal to us, but to them, it can really make a big deal. And I do worry about falling. I mean, I've had patients fall out front and stuff like that, and I know that can be a liability to me, be a liability to you guys, it could be. So. Anything else?
Anybody? Okay, so, um, can we do that tomorrow, Brian, too?
Yeah.
Just take a look?
And we can look at, uh, handicap spots along that corner. Did we put a permanent one out on?
We never did.
Was, was it just temporary during construction?
We never even put temporary because we just put the cones up.
Okay.
That said.
I know we gave you more, uh, space on the Eighteenth Street side as far as, uh, the drive, the drive over curb and then not having the grass space between the sidewalk and the curb.
Yes, you did. And, and you, you did make it so that it came down and was flush so that people could walk in there if they had to. I mean, that was really, I do appreciate that.
Yeah, we, we can look at that, and then we'll have a discussion.
And, and maybe, maybe not all handicap, but something designated that.
So the, the decision that was made about the removing one side of the parking was made, uh, during the design phase, when I believe we had three options brought to city council. Um, the consensus was we needed to save some money, and really, the only way to save money is, is less material, so of the three options, um, it was, it was, uh, decided to narrow the road and then eliminate parking on the north side.
And you know, and.
And that was done, I mean, back in twenty twenty-three, so.
I understand that, and I guess if, if would have been, I feel like there was no transparency about this, and maybe, I get the paper, maybe I didn't read it, but I had the opportunity to buy a house next to me, I could have tore it down and put that in parking and would have solved all my problems, and I didn't because the first thing was, um, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna buy another piece of property, I didn't wanna have to tear it down, the cost of that, and then I was told that it had asbestos in there, and I thought, I do not wanna get in some, something I don't wanna end up a, a lot of money, but if I would have known that, I would have probably bought the property and tore it down, I would have had a parking lot next to my property.
I mean, it's something, like I said, we can come out tomorrow and look at it.
Okay. I'm actually.
I guess to, to halt, the only way to be able to halt what's happening tonight is, I, I'm assuming council would have to table the third reading of the, an approval of the ordinance change. Um, then we could look at that first block, and, and we get with, with Chief Bob and myself, and, and if there is any safety issues of having the first block remain as it is with parking.
I mean, if you.
Because we, we did decide to do that at the last block on the, at the cemetery, is to keep two-sided parking between Carroll and Ridge.
Yeah.
So that's something we could look at.
I would really appreciate it because I've been here twenty-five years. I mean, it makes, when we closed down that Eighteenth Street, it did affect my practice. I mean, I had problems, I had patients that didn't wanna come in because they couldn't walk that far. Um, so I think it will have an impact on my practice if we're only parked on the one side of the street, especially with elderly, and, and this, the population of Kielkuk is just getting older, so.
And I believe on that first block, you have, what, three businesses and then one residence that actually faces Johnson Street and not.
Absolutely, yeah.
Not, um, Eighteenth, so.
And I think the other businesses, I talked to them, and I think they have some park in their own, but I think they probably would appreciate having, you know.
I mean, they're car dealerships, so they've got lots to park in, so.
They got lots, yeah.
Anything else?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
My name is Erica Barrett, and my address is five eleven North Third. Um, I just, I'm the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I just wanted to give just a quick update really quick. Um, I said that twice, but first of all, we have members of our commission that are in musketeen for the Preservation Summit, which was made possible through the money that the city allocated towards us for the budget this year, and so we just wanna say thank you. Um, the second thing is, we have been, just an update on the grants that we've been awarded. The first one is a certified local government grant, which is something that we were awarded this year as we got our designation this year. Um, we sent out some requests for proposals, and we received one, and we're making a decision at our meeting this Tuesday at four thirty. Um, so whether or not we have that proposal, but that is for an inventory for the entire city. Um, all the houses, we're looking for historic homes, buildings, landmarks, all those sorts of things, and we received another grant through the Golden Oak Society, um, to hire two high school students as interns, and they are helping Main Street, they're, we're collaborating, the Historic Preservation Commission with Main Street Incorporated, to do surveys just of Main Street, and so these student interns are helping us with that. Um, and we are sending out letters, we were folding them today, and we're sending out letters to business owners and those that are within the Main Street District to inform them that we're gonna be taking site inventories. So if anybody's listening, um, but also for your knowledge, we're gonna be having kids taking some pictures of the buildings, and then if anybody has research or photographs that they've compiled about the historic nature of their properties, we would love to have that, it would make our jobs easier, and we're gonna be going through library resources, newspaper resources, just to see what we can find. This is going to help us, um, apply for historic preservation tax credits, it's gonna help us to get Main Street, hopefully, designated as a national historic district, which will help businesses, it will help with receiving grants, it'll help with tax breaks, so we're really excited about this, and we're excited to get kids involved as well, because we hope that will get the younger generation more excited about it. Um, and then the other one is a National Trust Foundation, or National. And then the other one is a National Trust Foundation, or National Trust Fund for Historic Preservation. We received ten thousand dollars on that for the Heritage Garden on Third and, in between Third and Main and Third and Blondo. And so we are working to find some contractors, landscape architect and a preservation architect to help us model a garden and a pavilion there. So just wanted to update you on that because a lot of the allocation that we've received from the city throughout the years and this year is going towards those things, but we're making progress. And just so people know, we are going to be starting that inventory. It's going to start in Main Street, and then it's going to go throughout the entire city. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Erica. Okay, anybody else?
Couple weeks ago, I came here and asked about update on homelessness in Kewick. Does anybody have any information regarding homelessness in Kewick and what's being done about it?
Are you talking, are you talking about the building that they're doing?
No, I'm talking about the community of homeless people that are inhabiting people's homes that don't live here. That are inhabiting the sidewalk, because that's me. I have to sleep in the sidewalk because Casey Barnes has harassed me out of my home. I cannot be in my home because electricity was off for six months. It was identified as unsafe to occupy. And then I was kicked out of my garage because I was laying on a mattress when she was talking to me. And she said, "You can't live in your garage." Without any further response from me, it was tagged, red-tagged. And then I was living in my yard, and she and CCS came and had me removed. When the police showed up, I says, "What's going on? You guys have a wreck?" I didn't know, they were standing out in the street with their back to me. And waited until the police showed up to approach me, a homeowner who is not a homeowner because my mommy died five years ago, and it takes five years for the probate to finish before I can put it in my name. I'm being treated as though I'm a trespasser. I can't even go in and remove people from my home. But yet, when I was removed from my driveway, and I say my driveway because my mom and dad are dead, I'm an only child. When I was removed from my driveway, it left me with the question, can I even cut the grass? So I can't even cut my grass without trespassing if I can't be in my driveway without trespassing. It's a very inappropriate outcome for a mother who worked for forty-five years in this town, thirty years at Shiller Globe, and fourteen years at Burrows in this county, in Fort Madison, and did everything right and believed in the system. The system has failed, as I now am homeless for a year and a half since I went through foreclosure with one house and couldn't go back to the other house as it was marked unsafe to occupy. I'm trying to get back in my home, and I need a path that's educated. And I need to be educated on how to get back into my home. My question is, how many other people are being forced into homelessness? They're undocumented, unidentified, because they're just living at their friend's house because they can't go to their house. That's just one piece of a bigger puzzle of drug addicts that don't have a place of support. Alcoholics, I don't know who all is out there in the community that are homeless, but I would like to know that our leaders have a concern about what to do for them, such as showers, access to restrooms. When you have the health department saying it's okay for sites not to have a bathroom if they don't cook food. There's limited access to facilities. Do you want buckets of poop in the alleys? You know, I don't want to see anything disgusting in my town. I love this town. It's a beautiful town. I'm excited for the preservation ideas that she's talking about because we have a beautiful community here. My grandmother ran a cab stand in this town from nineteen twenty-three to nineteen eighty-six. And she provided, Bessie Harrington provided, as my great-grandmother, provided transportation in this town for sixty-three years. And many other family supports to this community have been a part of my family history. I'm just here to say, I don't understand what we're doing. And causing me to be homeless is my complaint, but the bigger concern is for other people that are homeless and what's being done to bring them out of that, such as, last thing, such as somebody paying for IDs so they can go get a job. There's no funding for photo IDs for people that don't have IDs. Anyway, there's so much that needs to be done. I can't even begin to scratch the surface. I just want to know what we have going on in support of stopping homelessness.
Thank you, Christopher. Anybody else? We'll move on to item number six, the consent agenda. Minutes of the regular council meeting and council workshop of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, resolution approving a liquor license for Casey's number two-six-three-six, thirty-five-thirty Main Street, Class E retail alcohol license effective July first, two thousand twenty-five. Approved cigarette slash tobacco licenses for July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Approve a device retail permit for the Davenport Tobacco and Vape Incorporated, DBA Green Leaf Tobacco and Vape, thirty-three-sixty Main Street, Suite Five, permit to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Sidewalk display permit for Angelini's Pizza Incorporated at ten oh-six through ten oh-eight Main Street to expire April two thousand twenty-six. Resignation of Terry Brackelsburg from the Kewick Veterans Memorial Commission effective May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Approve a special event permit for the City of Hamilton, Tommy Booker for Flags Over the Mississippi on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Rain date will be June fifteenth at Third and Main to the Bridge, eleven AM to four PM. Approve a special event permit for the Main Street Incorporated Summer Fund and Fundraiser Saturday, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, North Fifth Street between Main Street and the alley from eight AM to ten PM. Motion to pay bills and transfers listed in the register's numbers, five-four-seven-four through five-four-seven-six. I need a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, motion to approve the third and final reading of the ordinance amending section nine point two-eight point zero-four-zero dealing with parking regulations for the northerly side of South Eighteenth Street from Main Street to Carroll Street. Do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to motion to table this to afford city staff an opportunity to meet with business to analyze the impact of that from Main Street to Johnson Street.
Anybody else? So this is tabled.
We have to vote on the table.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number eight, consider resolution amending engineering fees for the Shoemaker-Holland for Grand Avenue from North Seventeenth to Boulevard Road reconstruction project. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The City of Kewick previously awarded the engineering contract to Shoemaker and Holland Engineering for the Grand Avenue from North Seventeenth to Boulevard Road project. The original job was to be mill and fill, but after pavement cores were taken, it was determined that the thickness of the existing asphalt would not adequately support the mill overlay. This resulted in a substantial increase in the design services. After the field review was completed, it was also determined that all curb and gutter should be replaced. Due to the unforeseen circumstances and the project design changing to Portland cement concrete, the engineers have submitted an amendment to the previous cost estimate for the engineering services. I would therefore recommend that the city amend the original agreement with Shoemaker and Holland for the design and reconstruction of the Grand Avenue Reconstruction Project by adding ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars to the base fee, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for the design, for a total of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. An additional thirty-five thousand dollars for the construction services will be required as summarized in the amendment number one of the professional services agreement. Do we have any discussion?
Is that worded correctly? Because ninety-eight thousand plus sixty-three thousand does not equal a hundred and fifteen thousand.
It's, so we tried to make this as clear as mud for everybody, but the hundred and fifteen thousand would be sixty-three, seven forty, plus the original fifty-one for the design.
Okay.
And then, so the actual change order amendment totals ninety-eight, seven forty is a sixty-three, seven forty, plus the thirty-five for the construction services.
So that number is not added to, that is the other two put together?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, just the way it was worded, it read that we were adding those together, so.
Sorry about that.
Any more discussion?
Director Carroll, will Jones be the ones making sure the ramps are compliant with all the regulations and everything? Or would that be a separate contractor?
Say that again.
Will Jones Construction, will they be the ones making sure all the ramps are compliant, all the sidewalks and everything?
We're not, this project does not include any sidewalks.
But won't the driveways meet the sidewalks, the ones that are getting redone, or?
So they will be responsible for the driveway grades. But since we're moving the street in to eliminate the driveways that stick out into the road with the culverts underneath them, we're not, we're far enough away from the sidewalks that it's not going to affect the existing slope model.
Okay. And will this change the bid for the contracting?
No.
Okay, so.
Nope. This is just for, so the thirty-five thousand dollars is for the services that the engineers provide during construction, like reviewing the pay applications from the contractor and making sure all the quantities are correct. And then if there is change orders, they would review and approve a change order so it meets the S U D standards.
So the curbs and gutters were factored in?
Yeah, yeah. There is not a change to the construction cost.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, consider resolution to purchase a tractor and two mowers. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
The City of Kewick Bridge Parks and Cemetery Departments need a new tractor and two mowers. With the trade-ins, the total cost of a tractor and two mowers will be forty thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. This quote only lasts for thirty days. Please authorize the Public Works Director to purchase a tractor and two mowers from the Armstrong Tractor of Donaldson, Iowa for forty thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Any discussion?
How old are the ones that these are replacing? How old, how old are the tractors that these are replacing? And this was a little bit.
So we typically use Armstrong, Donaldson for our residential mowers. You could just go over to the trailer and put it down. You guys have a machine in there that shows us what you're using. And then we decided to put a tractor in.
These are the zero turn? Are these the zero turn?
Sorry. The lawnmowers are both zero turns. The tractor is a compact tractor that will be used in the cemetery for fixing the graves that have been dug. And also, it will come with an auger attachment because we dig our own cremation graves. And right now, they do that either with a hand gas auger or by hand. And we really have difficult doing that in the wintertime. So this is going to assist them quite a bit.
A loader bucket as well, then, correct?
Yes.
Loader bucket, and then the auger on the back?
Yes.
Perfect.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Item number ten, consider resolution approving a contract for transportation services with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission. Do I have a motion to, do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Annual contract with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning for Transportation Services, seven-one, two thousand twenty-five to six-thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Do we have any more discussion?
I have a question. Did anything change on this contract compared to our contract last year? Or are the services still the same?
Same services.
Thank you.
Item, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number eleven, consider resolution of support for the Workforce Housing Tax Credit, WHTC, application to be submitted to the Iowa Economic Development Authority, IEDA, by Main Street Kewick Incorporated. Do I have a motion to approve? Main Street Kewick Incorporated is renovating the upper stories of two properties at eleven hundred and fourteen Main and eleven sixteen Main Street at the estimated cost of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Part of the funding package being used for this project is the Workforce Housing Tax Credits through the Iowa Development Authority. The program requires local support, including matching funds of at least a thousand dollars a unit. This resolution documents the City of Kewick's support for the project with a local match provided either through a cash match or tax abatement. Staff recommends approval. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number twelve A, consider resolution approving the U M B Bank Bank N A of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as a paying agent, not note registrar and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number twelve B, consider resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing or providing for the issuance of five million, five hundred general obligation capital loan notes, series twenty-twenty-five, and levying a tax to pay said notes, approval of tax exemption certificate, and continuing disclosure certificate. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number thirteen, consider resolution approving a contract to reconstruct the alley at North Sixth Street. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The City of Kewick hired Kewick Contractors Incorporated to perform emergency sewer repair at the North Sixth Street alley last fall due to the sewer collapsing. Once the sewer pipe was replaced and the ground was left to settle, and now it's time to pave the area that was excavated. Since the time the sewer was replaced, several business owners have complained about storm water leakage in their buildings, and this alley reconstruction should correct this issue. Bid requests were sent out to city contractor list, and one bid was returned by Hickey Contracting Company of Kewick submitted the loan bid in the amount of eighty-six thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. I would therefore recommend that the City Council approve a contract with Hickey Contracting Company of Kewick to reconstruct the alley at North Sixth Street in the amount of eighty-six thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. Do I have a discussion?
Yes. Brian, did you get my email?
Yeah, I did. I have it right here in front of me. Did you want me to?
I'm most concerned about the drainage issue. I spoke with representatives of Pilot Grove Bank, The Watering Can, and Family Discount. All three had no water issues prior to the sewer collapse, and all three. All three had no water issues prior to the sewer collapse, and all three have suffered quite a quantity of water issues.
You say they had no water issues prior? They def, they most definitely did have water issues prior to this.
Okay, and you saw those?
Oh, yes, and Pam has saw them, yes.
Okay, all right, so.
This just, this did attribute more water issues because we took the pavement off the top and then filled it back with clean rock.
Right. But we're, I spent a lot of time there with them talking, and they had been left with the impression that there was going to be a temporary drainage fix, and then there was going to be a, a plan to bury it when they paved, and it would run to the street.
So we did, we did look at that option, we, being myself, Michael Clark from the SUDAS Department, Dave Hinton when he was our interim administrator, and then we had Josh Rose from Keokuk Contractors in on these conversations. And there are a couple different issues at hand with that, one being the roof drain pipes are, are private, and we really shouldn't be running a public utility line to just serve private roof drains. The other issue is, you know, as you know, we had to separate them from the sanitary line.
Right, I explained that part.
Because of the putting stormwater into our sanitary system. And it just wasn't going to be feasible for us to run, you know, several hundred feet of storm line to pick up private roof drains, which, you know, as a city, we shouldn't be doing that for anybody anyways. We did consult Jim Dennis on this when we made this decision, and he concurred with us at the city that we are not responsible for their private roof drains. So the issue that we were, what we decided to do is put the alley back in concrete, put an invert, instead of putting a crown in, I put an invert crown, that's going to drain the water to an existing intake that is right at the end of the alley.
Right, in the street.
Yes. So it'll, it'll funnel the water from the alley into that intake. What that intake doesn't pick up will go around the curb line down to the intakes at Main Street.
Okay, when you say running, I, I don't have it frozen in my mind about the individual sewer line, are you talking about digging deeply or superficially at the surface of the, of the ground?
It would have to be at a minimum depth underneath pavement, or you'd have to put in concrete storm pipe so it doesn't collapse, because there, there are, there is semi-traffic in that alley, which was another reason that we decided to go with concrete.
I'm talking about something that would be like a foot wide and just have, they said that, they'd been told that there would be a grate system over a concrete trough type thing that would lead alongside the buildings and then down and empty out into the street. That way, with a grate cover over it, that it would, what do I want to say? Still permit the armored car to empty out the, the coins and cash that need to go into the bank, and they would still be able to use their concrete pad that they've got at the back of their building.
I don't recall that option that being brought up to us. That again would be a.
That's what they said was given, an option that was spoken to them from you.
Well, the only option I gave them was piping it, which I guess it's a similar option, but like I said, the city decided that that was not going to be feasible for us to do.
Okay.
So we, I mean, so our option that we came up with was to go in with seven inches of concrete like we would put into a street to handle the loads that go up and down the alley.
And I understand that, I have no qualms about the, the concrete part of it.
Well, their surface drains now drain, obviously onto the surface into, into clean rock that lets it filter down to a pipe, to a, to a new pipe that, that's bedded in sand. So all that water, that rainwater right now is being filtered down and go through those hundred-year-plus-old stone basements pretty easily. So now we're going to funnel that surface water out into our storm system.
Okay. I, I don't have an issue, and I can vote on the construct, reconstruction, but I just have real concern about the way the, the situation's being handled with the water runoff.
I mean, you know, if we want to get really technical about it, we have replaced the storm line and then replaced the drivable alley.
I'm sorry, so.
For our obligation as a city, we replaced the sewer line.
Right.
And then we replaced the.
Sanitary sewer.
Sanitary sewer, yes, that's the one that collapsed.
Right.
And we came back and we replaced the alley with a drivable rock material like.
Right.
Seventy percent of the alleys are in town. And now we're going above and beyond and going to pave that with concrete. Previously, it was a hodgepodge of gravel, concrete, and asphalt running all through that alley. So I mean, and from my opinion and the opinion of my managers and the administrator at the time, that we, we are going above and beyond what we could do by paving this back in concrete.
Okay.
And I can't reflect to if it's going to solve their wa, it's, it's not going to solve their basement water a hundred percent because they were getting that before this issue, before we had this issue.
I don't believe all of them were, but. What about other places? Because I did considerable driving around prior to the meeting to see where there were instances of other drain pipes that were going into the ground and not visibly shooting the water away from a cutoff pipe, if you would. So are all of those other drain pipes going into a, a sanitary sewer as well, or?
I can't answer that without having our guys go and camera the sewer lines.
Okay.
No, I mean, the process for us is if we have a sewer issue on that line and then dig it up, then they're disconnected. Correct.
So what I remember from when I was still building houses, it wasn't legal to hook a gutter drain to city sewer.
Correct.
And so if it is hooked to city sewer, it's not, it's not following code anyway. So any, any, any gutter that goes into the ground has to go into your own drainage system, and it cannot be hooked to any type of, it, it can't even end drought at a city sewer if, if it's known that it, that that's what it does. So if they've got pipes that are actually pushing into our city sewer, legally, that's not correct. And if that's what's going on, that would, that would, that in itself would cause us more problems.
I would say most of those drainage pipes that are along the backside of Main Street businesses were there.
I can say, yeah, it's probably.
Before that ordinance was in place.
Back when it was more of just a runoff. Something else we've got to remember is, when we're talking an alley off of Main Street, every building slopes to that alley because they don't want water running on the guys on Main Street sidewalks. So every, every roof slopes backwards down into that alley. That's a lot of water, and even with all of the, the good drains we have, just the other night when it rained so hard, you can watch and you can, you can go to a brand-new opening that is fully open, fully functional, and it'll be two, two or three inches underwater because there's so much volume of water. As soon as the rain stops, give it forty seconds, and the water's gone. But you've got to understand that when, when rain runs, when, when it comes that hard, we're just not set up to swallow that much water all at one time. So you're going to, when, when it builds up, then it's going to go over some of your minimal characters that are going to try to stop your water prevention. Old buildings, water, they just don't really mix.
Director Carroll, I have a question about the downspouts that were cut. Have those been replaced, as, are they still open? And is that the business owner's responsibility to replace the downspouts?
So we, we didn't do anything with the downspouts along their building. We disconnected underground, and they have, the majority of them that I've seen, and I don't, I can't speak to whether my guys did this or not, but a lot of them have PVC sticking off now that elbow it into the.
Okay, see, I didn't know if anything had been replaced.
So we, we disconnected it underground, so that section of pipe that would have been underground from our pipes to their building, we removed.
So after these repairs are done, the business owners won't have to connect into it anyway, or?
They, they can do what, what they see fit to have their water run into the alley. And most of them right now, I believe, they're shooting right out into the alley now anyways.
Okay.
I think there's one business that sticks back up in further than the other sides, and they may have to run a corrugated pipe or something to get it, depending on how much they wanted to run across their ground.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number fourteen, consider resolution approving vehicle purchase for the Keokuk Police Department. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Purchase of a two thousand twenty-five Dodge Durango to replace a marked squad car that was damaged on two twenty-six, twenty-five, which was a total loss. Insurance is contrib, contributing thirty-seven thousand, six hundred, thirty-four dollars and twenty-six cents to the replacement cost. The total replacement cost of the vehicle and upfitting is approximately forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, twenty-six cents, leaving a city expenditure of approximately eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number four, fourteen, consider resolution setting the time and place to conduct a public hearing to repeal Title Nineteen plat and subdivisions of the Keokuk Municipal Code and adopt a new Title Nineteen subdivisions. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A public hearing was set for June fifth on the previous council meeting of May fifteenth. Due to error in the public hearing notice would not have been published within the timeframe set out in the Iowa Code Section three-six-two point three, point three of the, of at least four days. The council must hold a pub, public hearings to allow interested parties to be heard before any changes can be effective. Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission assisted the city staff and the city planning commission to update the subdivision code. The planning commission met several times to discuss the proposed changes. On April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, they recommended approving and forwarding the proposed ordinance to the city, city council. Do I have any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Consider resolution, the time and place to conduct a public hearing on the request to amend Title Twenty of the Keokuk Municipal Code by adding adaptive reuse of special-use buildings in the residential zoning districts. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I need a second.
Second.
A public hearing was set for June fifth at the previous council meeting of May fifteenth. Due to an error in the public hearing notice would not have been published within the timeframe set out by the Iowa Code Section three-six-two point three, three of at least four days. Setting a public hearing to amend the zoning code to add adaptive reuse to the designated special uses. The city planning commission at their regular meeting on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, reviewed and recommended adding adaptive reuse of the special-use buildings within residential districts as a special use. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventeen, consider resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a demolition contract for a single-family dwelling located at six-twenty-three South Third Street. Do I, I need a motion to approve. Six-twenty-three South Third is owned by the Integrity Investment, REO Holdings LLC. This company purchases and rede, purchases slash redeems tax cell certificate with no intention of redevelopment of maintaining or of maintaining the properties. Currently, this company owns twenty-six other properties in the city of Keokuk. Most of them are in very poor condition. Six-twenty-three South Third is in poor condition, the roof has, roof has several holes along with the tree falling on the house some time ago. Three bids were received. WNS was the lower bid at six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The high bid on the property was eleven thousand. Housing slash code enforcement officer Casey Barnes has taken Integrity Investments, REO Holding LLC to court numerous times for compliance with their vacant property registry. The city also contracts out mowing for the said properties, liens, and will continue to be placed on the property. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Item number eighteen, council liaison reports.
At the Great River Regional Waste Meeting, we, they had a instance where somebody, contractor, they really brought in a large chunk of concrete, and when it got to, up into the trailer, got up to the dump, and they couldn't get it out. They broke about fifty rivets on this trailer. Trailers are very important. They have four of them, there's two of them constantly in, in use, and third one a lot. So they don't have a lot of thing. So for the present time, anyway, they will not be accepting any contractual, contract merchandise, or whatever you call it, out at, out at this transfer station. The contractors will have to haul it to Fort Madison. They're.
Do they know where it came from?
Pardon?
Do they know who, where it came from?
No, they don't. As a matter of fact, our crew loaded it on to the, to the, to the wagon, and they didn't see it either. But when it got up there, they couldn't get it out of the, the bed wouldn't travel. The trail, that bed goes, come from side to side, it isn't as small when it goes side to side. And it has to be, to make a, to do a regular dump trailer, and that's soft ground, they get up and they tip over. So these, these here are the vehicle they need to use, and that, they, this recycle station started out with fifteen thousand ton was the limit they could take per year. They're presently under a five-year contract. I don't know just exactly where they are in that, but their, their present contract says thirty thousand ton a year. They're presently at twenty-seven thousand plus. Of course, now that ends the first, first July, then another year comes on. So there is a lot going through this transfer station, and they don't, can't take a chance on them wagons being down, because if they go one, two days without being able to transfer stuff out of this transfer station, it's full and would have to be shut down. So.
Anybody else? Item number twenty, new business?
It's not new business, but just a reminder, I'm not sure I heard you say at the beginning for the events, the flags over the Mississippi on June fourteenth Flag Day. We're encouraging people to participate. We'll be going out on the bridge with flags to honor. Or glory.
It is a great day to, to line up the, on the bridge and hold those flags and give a tribute to America and to the flag and to independence. It's a great day, and everybody should try real hard to be there. It doesn't take real long, and they do have, you know, like hot dogs and everything afterwards, and it's a great event for the city of Keokuk and Hamilton if you're interested.
Registration's at eleven, and we go out on the bridge at twelve. Registration's at eleven, and we go out on the bridge at twelve.
Well, this event is being done by somebody else, so the city can't. You know, they've already asked for a special use permit to do it, so. So if we don't have anything else, everybody? I skipped staff reports because I didn't think we had any. Did we? No? Okay. About you, Jim, you want to tell us anything exciting?
I could tell you about my kids, but no, the.
That's exciting.
It is some days. I do want to let you know, I'm going to bring a resolution forward next time that, I don't think we've done this in the past. During, we do transfers between funds during the course of the year. And the majority of those are budgeted ones that the council knows about. I'm just going to have a resolution that kind of memorializes the annual transfers that are done. You'll see something a little different than what you've had in the past. Next meeting's the last one of the year, so it's one that would need to be done.
Sounds good. Anybody else? With that being said, I need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Let's go home.
I am going to have. Well, you can't tell when it's on or not.
You don't have a lot.
No.